Okay, good evening, everyone. Today is the regular meeting of the Wellington Board of Education. It is 7:02 on Tuesday, May 15th. And we'll call this meeting to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance as always, so if you would please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you all for that. Before we get our meeting fully underway, I want to take a moment to recognize a loss amongst our community. The end of April, our member, Herb Mariko, passed away after a short illness. And we are all incredibly sad. And I'd like us to take a minute to remember him together in honor of his 46 years of service on this board, which is epic beyond belief. I can tell you what 12 years feels like. That 46 is a lifetime, and he donated that to our board. So if we can take a moment together, that would be great. Thank you. Thank you all. Herb was always our parliamentarian and helped to keep our meetings on track, so we will definitely try and all follow in his example of service to the community. I'd like to read a brief letter from the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, addressed to all of us in the board and the members of the community. "We are so sorry to learn of the death of Herb Mariko. His 46 years of service as a member of the Wellington Board of Education is truly remarkable. Cabe benefited from his active engagement at the state level, including his service on the Cabe Board of Directors as an area director. He was a regular participant in our programs, including the Day on the Hill this past March. Our staff and members always enjoyed interacting with him. It's obvious that he was a huge asset for Wellington, and we know he will be missed greatly. On behalf of the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, Board of Directors and staff, as well as our members throughout the state, please accept our deepest sympathies upon his passing. And again, the Wellington Board of Education staff and community are in our thoughts." And that's from Patrice McCarthy, the executive director there. I know we all have our own memories, and we could probably fill an entire meeting just reminiscing of fond thoughts and examples from him. And for now, our thoughts are with his wife Lucille and his family as they grieve. But he would want us to continue because he took this work very seriously. So we are going to move on with our meeting and start with present to speak. We invite members of the community to speak before the board. This is a meeting in public, so we're not going to respond back to you, but we do listen carefully to everything you say. And we ask that you start with your name and address, and that you keep your comments focused on issues at hand. And we will have this time also at the end of the meeting. We offer two different opportunities usually on these meetings. If you would like to be recognized to speak, we ask that you use the button on the bottom of your reactions button on the Zoom bar so that we can see your hand, or you can come on the screen visually so that we can see your hand. I see Nick has his hand raised.
Mick, tell 49 Myrtle, I hope the Board of Education takes the opportunity to send a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen in regards to the School Building Committee to, at the very minimum, change the charge. I hope that recommendation is given tonight. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who's present to speak? I see a number of folks on the board. If not, you will have a second opportunity at the end of the meeting if there's anything that you would like to say at that point. Not seeing anyone else raise their hand, we will move on to the Chairman's Report. Just briefly, it is that time in the spring again where we do the superintendent's evaluation. Board members can expect to see the superintendent survey evaluation survey in your email box in the next two weeks. Please, if you would look at the responses, the questions, and put your responses in, it will allow us to provide a timely evaluation to Superintendent Stevens. I almost called you Superintendent Phillips. Sorry about that. That was a little stumble.
As well.
I'm sure that you get that more than once. Okay, so other than that, that means we will go into executive session at our next meeting in order to do that afterwards. So please respond quickly so that we can do that in a timely manner. Okay, and that is it for the Chairman's Report. Were there additional communications, Mr. Stevens?
We had one communication, I believe, came today from Richard Maloney, and I think it was emailed to everybody on the board. If you did not get it, let me know. But I believe I saw everyone's address on their email address. And sorry, I have allergies and I'm losing my voice already.
Sorry. Okay, well, if you have to go unmute to sneeze or blow your nose, that is perfectly allowed. We will understand why you are stepping away from the screen if necessary. Okay, first on our agenda is a presentation. It's a just-in-overview at this point of the math curriculum. So welcome, Dr. Connolly to Conley, not Connelly. There are other Connellys. Sorry, Conley. The floor is yours.
So Erin, if I can start real quick, the committee is going to be having one more meeting. It's scheduled for, I think it's the first week of June. And we kind of went back and forth prior to this meeting to go, should we present this tonight? It's early, but there's actually a lot in this overview. And simply because it's very different than the math that you and I experienced. So there's, there's links in here. You'll have access to this presentation. I'll email it out tomorrow. So you can follow the videos. It'll give you a kind of a kickstart. It would be the same presentation that we would have prior to the curriculum. And then our plan is once the committee makes the formal recommendation, I'm assuming at their next meeting, which would be in, in June, early June, I'll just, we'll, we'll have Erin and myself get it out to all of you. So you can see that, and the first reading wouldn't be until after that, I believe, because obviously you're going to have time to review. So Erin, the, the mic is yours.
Did you want to share your screen?
I will.
And I'll let anybody in while you're sharing your screen.
All right. So, good evening. So this, this is a presentation to kind of go over, well, the rationale behind the major curriculum resource we chose, but also for, to help you understand the shifts that have happened in, in what mathematics instruction, teaching and learning looks like in the classroom. So if you remember, as we grew up, most of us, probably all of us, learned our facts through fact cards, repeated practice, constantly, you know, memorizing your facts. And so, and that's what we learned as mathematical fluency. This kind of this memories, memorization and regurgitation of either facts or mathematical concepts or formulas. There's a huge shift from this memorized regurgitate kind of practice to really kind of understanding the process and procedures to gain the, the answers or to gain understanding of math. So when, as we teach math, instead of having, okay, here's your formula, memorize it, and let's utilize it, it's more, what is, we start with at the concrete level of that formula. What does that look like? What are, why is the formula work? So that really concrete, and as you're looking at numbers in front of you, that, you know, usually you start with a tactile component. So if we take just the number five, the concrete understanding of the concept, five are those five components, so five blocks. Then we turn that into a picture. So you might draw five circles, understanding that a picture can represent five items. And then that abstract version is when we tie to a number to it. That's this abstract symbol. We're now tying to this concept of five. So no matter what mathematical concept we're teaching, we're going through this process of concrete pictorial abstract to, to build the student's understanding. And so again, building on fluency, because mathematical fluency is super important as we, as we look at and build number sense. And as we build the number sense, we're looking for kids to be able to think flexibly, accurate, accurately, compute accurately and efficiently. So again, instead of that memorized regurgitate, we're looking at how, do you have multiple strategies to solve a problem? Can you get the answer on multiple ways? That's where you build that flexible thinking. And then, of course, do those strategies work? And do you get that correct answer? That's where we're working on accuracy. And then efficiency is, you might have five strategies. Which one's going to be the most efficient strategy? So where you're evaluating, that kind of last piece is evaluating which one's going to work best. And that's how you become efficient with your mathematics. So we're looking for that flexibility, and we're building that flexibility, accuracy and efficiency, which is what we then call procedural fluency. And NIM, this is embedded in through language, through tasks. It's embedded all throughout, both vertically and then horizontally up all through the grades, very similar, similarly. So what does this look like? Well, this is one of our first grade classrooms, and I was actually really excited because I actually believe it was the day I was creating this presentation. But one of the first grade teachers says, look at this. I'm so excited. Look at what these kids are doing. Look at their understanding. And so as we unpacked this picture, you can see over to the side. So what, what does this show us that these, our first graders understand? Well, look at their number sense. They're decomposing numbers. That means they're taking larger numbers and breaking them apart. So they under, you truly have to understand what seven is to know that there's six and one that make it up. So you can see them decomposing numbers there, or putting numbers back together. You can see underneath the seven plus six, they're pulling the six and the four, they're making a 10 and putting it back together. So they're decomposing imposing number, composing numbers. They're using doubles. They're looking at, you know, six plus six, if they know that's 12, then seven plus six must be 13. So they're using doubles, or they're using the strategy doubles plus one, and then they're using, they're looking for fives and tens. So so many strategies be, can be seen and represented here, but this is what we're building. We're building that flexible understanding where you can really have this understanding of numbers, where you can work with them in a multitude of ways. And this is just a great example of what it looks like. The other, the other big shift is the pedagogical shift. So again, for, for a very long time, and still for many subjects still today, we use what we call a gradual release, or there's a direct instruction where teachers are kind of that, the expert, and they're relaying the information to the students who need to learn this information. So for instance, you know, in direct instruction, teachers relay and model mathematical concepts. Oftentimes, that goes through what we call a gradual release process, where it's, I'm going to show you as the expert, we're then going to do this together, and then you're going to try this on your own. That still follows kind of this direct instruction model. The new model that this program capitalizes on to really build 21st century skills and understanding is problem-based learning. So it capitalizes on the student curiosity. So they're, they're posed a problem that they need to figure out, or a few problems throughout it that they need to figure out, and they're working collaboratively. They're, they're having to persevere for some, through some difficult kind of understandings and trying to figure out concepts. They're communicating, they have to learn how to communicate their thinking. They're really talking about their thinking and looking at their processes. So it's a really building a lot of these skills, but it's, it's inquiry-based. It's very student-driven. It's not the teacher telling them what they need to learn. The teachers being very skillful in their questions that they're using to help guide the students to where they need to be and what they need to understand. So this is, we're not going to click on these, but these are great resource links. So if you want to see what this looks like in action, you can click on either the K5 video, the 68 video, or the high school algebra video. And they'll show you, they'll give you a short clip of a classroom, and then there's a lot more information around the program down below, but that's the illustrative math site. If you'd like to check out Illustrator of Math is our major resource. So this is the resource that's truly kind of the, the core of our Wellington mathematics curriculum. And I'm sorry, you can hear my dog grumbling in the background. So why did we choose IM? Well, it actually had the highest reports in, in the Ed Reports categories. It had two of the three categories had perfect scores. And the third area, very close to perfect, with 25 out of 27 areas being met. So very, very high ratings. We know that these are grounded in best practices for effective mathematics instruction. They're rooted in well-respective pedagogy and methodology. And then really tied to like a rigorous standards. I have to say, as I wrote the curriculum from kindergarten, got to see it kindergarten through the algebra course, it does a phenomenal job of tying to previous learning, to build on what students already know, to bring in the real world, so they're really applying it to true and authentic applications. It spirals really nicely all the way up through the grades. But it is very, very well, well done. And there is an expert authoring team, which you can learn more about on the websites I attached earlier. And the last thing was, when I came in, I did interviews with every, with every grade level and every department at HMS, and the mathematics department who had been using IM, I was kind of asking, you know, how do you, like, everyone loved the program. And no one had anything bad to say. So it made sense as they released the lower grades to really look at, should we do this comprehensively? So it really took in the teacher's feedback, kind of at the upper grades, and knowing that it was working for them to be comprehensive and holistic. K8, that was another big rationale for choosing IM as our major resource. Kendall Hunt is, so this was very similar to Open Syed, where it was an open source curriculum, so it is free. We, we do pay for a few items because we do get student workbooks and teacher guides, the hard, hard copy teacher guides. But the curriculum is completely accessible for free through the Kendall Hunt site. All you need to do is you need to sign up with your email, and you can do it as a family member. You can do it as, you know, just someone who's interested in, in kind of looking at what this is, and they, and you can, if you click on these pictures when this is posted, these will bring you to, yeah, so, and then you can go into either K5 or 68, scroll down a little more. There you go. And so there's a site for families and for teachers. So there's, if you're as a family wondering, oh, my kindergartner, I know they're in this unit. Now, I'm wondering how I can support them or what I can do with them at home. Here, you can go right into the unit. And actually, we have a pacing guide for you too, so you know exactly what unit will be on and when. And you could go right into the unit and find out some great strategies and how you can, how we're teaching that concept. And how, what you can do to help support them. Those sections, you'll see in a minute, those are the different checkpoints in the unit. And then, and maybe you're interested in seeing, what does the teacher see? You could always go into the teachers and actually see lesson by lesson what the lessons look like. So you have full access to, down to the lesson level through the Kendall Hunt website. So that's our major resource is illustrative math. Our curriculum, we did, we do, as I mentioned, we use teacher guides. So we do, we did buy the teachers' hard copy teacher guides, as well as we buy the student workbooks. But some teachers in the state, some choose the online, because you could still access it through online, some that works out better for written documents. So we're going to go over a written document in a minute, so we'll walk through those components, but generally speaking, the unit descriptions are exactly from, they're verbatim from IM. The essential questions and big ideas I developed and derived from the unit as I wrote them. And then objectives are, are mostly taken from IM, but sometimes I reworded them to be a little more student-friendly. Lessons are noted, they're straight from the book. And then we'll go over the assessment, look for some, listen for some, we get there, so they make more sense. I'll talk a little bit more about those in a minute. But professional development for illustrative math has, has been a focus. We did start it this year. Because, again, so, so Heidi, our math coach was new, so this is one embedded professional development that we have. We do have a math coach who joined us and has been working with the teachers. She's been really focusing on that pedagogical shift from that I do as a teacher, we do, you do, to what does it look like to facilitate inquiry-based learning. So starting in that pedagogical shift, direct instruction from direct instruction, problem-based learning, differentiation for all learners. We know that there's been a huge gap since COVID, so really trying to bridge that gap with this program. Actually, this program has what they call adaptive units, which are phenomenal for bridging gaps. They really, they, they take, they say, you know, if you're short on time, or if you have students who are a year behind, these are what you want to do. Focus on these sections. So they give us what there's called adaptive units. And then mathematical practices, how to time our lessons, because the pedagogical shift can certainly take a little bit longer with timing. And then centers, inclusion of centers. We did have Craig run the launch of the program in the beginning of this year, and then follow up with four online sessions throughout this year with the teachers. However, after utilizing them, we realized that, I don't know, I don't know how many people are aware of this, but Heidi, our math coach, is actually going for her PhD in mathematics. So we have a really great asset on our staff. So the idea is she, we did have her apply for the IM certified national training. So she would become a national, the person that people normally hire to do all of these trainings. So she would be trained as a national certified trainer, and we would have her on her, our staff. It is a very competitive process. We do know that she got to the second round. So that is where we're at right now. Yes, fingers crossed for her. So that is kind of, that's our, and that's our plan for professional development, to really build the, the internal component. So we have it on staff and at our disposal. And so Phil, would you mind clicking on a grade one? There is a different, a bit of a different model for the elementary grades K5. Oh. There's a little bit of a different model from elementary grades five to the, the middle school units. I can speak to them. They can check out the links. All of the information I'm going to say is actually what I just said. I was just going to walk through kind of those components, but you'll see, it's, the components are exactly. Or if you want me to pause Phil, I can log out and I'd have to give you access.
Well, I think it's also the same format that we've seen across the board. So I think this is not their first time they've seen this, this layout.
Yeah, so it's the exact same format, and the only differences are, I noted in that, the WPS overview. Yeah, so that, and those, I think that, I think my last thing was this question slide, right?
Yeah, so what we'll do is when we, when we forward this presentation out, we'll make sure that link works. I'm not sure if I'm not, not logged into Google right now, or why that didn't work for me, sorry. But it is the same framework, and I think something I just wanted to add, when Laura had asked this as a committee member, you know, using a program so heavily, what did you do, Erin? Like, what was the work? And it was the addition of the questions and making sure whether you picked up a science curriculum in Wellington, or a literacy curriculum, or a math curriculum, they all look the same. Same layout. You know where to look for resources. You know where to look for assessments, and that's really a lot of work to do in these documents, as opposed to trying to find something within the program wherever they decided to put it. So there's a lot of that work has been done here by Erin.
That sounds great. Thank you so much for that overview. Are there questions? Go ahead, Donna.
I have two questions. One is, Erin, you mentioned that they kind of tell you what modules or units to look at if kids are behind to help them catch up. So this is partly for you and partly for Phil. That sounds like it would be really appropriate for either an after-school or a summer school opportunity, because if there's targeted modules that the kids have access to, it sounds like that would be a gift, you know, as far as being able to use those modules to help kids that are behind. And, and that way, and kind of see where they are. So whether something's maybe done at the library over the summer, or you know, it, resources in the hands of parents to guide them of this is, this is where you should be looking, or the teachers give out at the end of the school year, or maybe even before then, to, to give parents a heads up so that this can be taken advantage of, so that they don't lose out. The other thing is, and this is the nervous part of me, so what keeps Heidi here if we put her through all this training, and it's really hard to get this training? Why would she, like, what is in her contract? Or is there something in her contract so that she doesn't get this stellar training and then leave little tiny Wellington for the great beyond?
Well, I'll let Phil answer the second part, but I will say, she is born and raised in a Wellington native, so why she's back with us? Her whole family's here.
I, I think that's, she came back to us to be here. And so, you know, she's got some expertise that we're lucky to have. And we find people that stay because of that, that they like what we have to offer as a small community. And, you know, she's, she's doing her PhD in math, so, you know, we're, we're, we will keep her as long as we can. But just like anything else, you know, when someone wants to go into admin or something, a big, a next step in their career, we also support them in that. And so if we can have her, the benefit of having her for a period of time, I think that's what we do, and she's within a teacher contract. So that's, you know, we do our best to keep her, all of our staff members here and happy, so.
Fair enough. Definitely want professional growth, but I don't want, you know, I know many people that have gotten great training, and then the person that paid for it gets dumped and they move on. So hopefully that will not be the case.
And, and just to note that while we always want to keep all of our great teachers and staff here, it's not something we can ever add to a contract. It's not like private business where we can do a non-compete clause and they can, can't move to another district. It's not quite the way it works in public circles. Brianna, you have your hand up.
I do, yeah, thanks. You said the, how long has IM been used in the, and what is upper grades, like five to eight? Oh, where are you, Erin?
I, I'm right here. I was just, I had put myself on mute to try to cover up my dog's grunting. So six through eight is the upper grades. And I believe they're going, this is the fifth year. I believe it's the fourth or fifth year.
And then how many, is this the first year for?
K5, yes.
And the reason for that, Brianna, is because it didn't exist.
Correct.
Yeah, I know. I'm curious to see how your, the staff of those younger grades feels about it too. And so I wanted to ask you, like, are you requiring 100% fidelity to the program? I know you said that this is like the basis for it all, but if lessons seem too simple or really complicated for no reason, is your, are your teams allowed to kind of discuss that and do what they need to do to make it more student-appropriate?
So in this first year, we're, we're trying, we're really working to have fidelity. However, with that, we have heard, you know, a lot of the teachers, especially younger grades, want more repeated practice. So we're, you know, there's, we have found some ways to build in some more repeated practice in addition to. But we're not changing anything, because we want to live it, you know, through. And the teachers actually feel have been on board with, you know, we have been kind of vocal about this too, like, we had to live it and then figure out, you know, if there's any changes we want to make at any point. So we are doing it with fidelity right now.
Okay. And does everybody have them? Did you get the kits or are you using materials you already have?
So, um, we had a lot of the materials in the kits, so what we, so we, um, I'm trying to think, we did, we, am I confusing that with science? We did, we have all the manipulatives. So the teachers last year went through the, the materials and gave us a order list of what they needed. And so we've been ordering them, the extra manipulatives that they've been needing for that for the manipulative component. And then there's also the, Heidi has been doing a lot of the centers, like creating the center, the center components.
Brianna, I advocated for that, because you don't have to buy these workbooks. You can print them all off. You can build your own kits. And we tried that at the middle school early on, and it was a bit of a nightmare, to be honest with you, and it was, it was made a lot more sense to purchase and make sure people have it, and the materials they need. So you're going to ask them to teach a curriculum and follow it. You got to make sure they have the materials. And so we've been pushing for that. We've, you know, someone needs materials, we get it for them. And that's where we spent a lot of money on over the last couple of years, just making sure you don't want to try a new unit, new lesson, and not have or have to recreate, you know, whatever it is.
Yeah. And sometimes it's hard to find, find things, you know, when you've got an online piece, and there's the teacher manual, and then you have this other thing you can find and look up, and that's where you print out the who, jema, what's it's like, it's just a lot of like chasing things down. So having like those number cards right at hand is really, really great. So, good.
It's a waste of time. We don't, we don't want staff members to do that. We want them to be able to have, you know, the grasp of the material that they're teaching. Spend the time on that, as opposed to, where am I going to find the dice? Where am I going to find the, the 10 blocks? Where, you know what I mean? Like, we don't want them to be doing that, so. The 10 blocks where, you know what I mean? Like, we don't want them to be doing that. So. And I'll continue to advocate for that. You know, if someone comes in, if you add another grade level and we only have two kits. We buy a third. It's just, you know, we're not going to scrape or ask someone to build. Been there, done that. Not so effective.
Yeah, that's awesome. Great. I totally support that. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, well, stay tuned. There will be more on the math curriculum going forward. So keep an eye on your inboxes. Okay. So moving on next to superintendent report.
Aaron, thank you so much. Feel free to uh enjoy your evening and I have to stay on here. So thank you. I had a couple of things to add to this tonight at the end of the, of my things that just came in afterwards. You all mentioned the folks that went to the art show. I know Donna was there. There was a couple of you there that mentioned it was tremendous. I was actually able to purchase four pieces of artwork and you know, we always talk about celebrations. So uh, we had it framed and it's hanging in my office. Uh, and the kids were excited to negotiate with me. So what better thing to do than just show you what uh is in my office now? So we have this one here. This is called balance. The pictures don't do it justice. It just didn't work out great uh taking pictures, but so that was one. That was by Maya. This was by Vivian. This is a watercolor that was, was purchased. And you can see as I'm clicking through them, right? Okay, this is uh Bryce. And different ages here. And this is Ramon. Um, and so they, they just were, were great. You know, great things that, you know. Being able to, to do that Brenda frame them to keep our costs down, but the kids were so excited to be able to be uh a part of that. And when I told them I wanted to purchase the art, they just thought it was, was unbelievable. So. I will be traveling with that artwork to see students to show them because they have not seen it framed yet. And I did contact their parents. So their parents didn't know they were receiving a little bit of funds for, for their artwork. It was exciting. So there's that. Um, the ARPA funds for the student enrichment, I wanted to share about too. We were able to, this is for student enrichment, not the recess equipment. This was, we were able to bring in NASS. Um, and that's the New England Science and Sailing. Utilizing those ARPA funds. Uh, and uh, obviously again, as they say, pictures, pictures speak louder than words. So. I'm going to show you some pictures from some of the things that the students did. I'm going to make sure again, I'm going to skip this one. Can you see that screen? So this is the, our thank you note that uh Erin and I worked on. Um, she took all the pictures. And so we're going to be giving this to the ARPA commission. So they know this is what we did. And so um each grade had, had some, some time. The, the NASS group was there for a few days and all the items were standard based. They were really engaging. I was there on several classroom days. And it was just incredible. So um every grade level was able to enjoy this. Uh, and there was different things that they did. So you've got, they did marine mammals and pre-K and one. They did push and pull in kindergarten. Uh, this was a hot one, launching, launching things down the ramp and trying to understand that concept. Uh, and these are all hands on things where they're building, uh, just really, really engaging. They did. Uh, I love this face right here, biomimicry in, in second grade. And I, if you don't see engagement in this, this boy's face, you know, you're, you're just, you're, you're missing it. Um, they, they had all of the, the thing, the tools out to check things up nice and close. You can see in third grade and fourth grade, they dissected the squid. Uh, and they had the choice to use the gloves. This was a very uh, a hot conversation, just going into classrooms and seeing the work they were doing, learning the parts. And so the classrooms did survive. They did not smell terrible for days. It was great. But. Again, just the engagement was, was great. This is the fifth grade did the backyard ecosystems. This is right in our river in their backyard at Hall School. Uh, again, high engagement, looking at what's in, in the river there. Um, there is a staff member right here. She was the only one in the full wader. So nobody was out deep in the river, just so folks know. Sixth grade did go, global climate change. Um. And this is interesting because they had to work to, to design a seawall to help slow down erosion. Um, and just the, the thought process behind it again, hands on, really engaging activities. Seventh grade did oceans in motion. And so they were, were, you know, watching how things moved. Um, and they were talking about environmental issues of trash in the ocean and the impact. Uh, and then eighth grade did fish, fishing and fisheries. Um, these, these photos weren't as exciting, but they were um. Just talking about adaptations and things. So just really, really engaging activities. So huge thanks to the ARPA commission for those funds. That was step one. Um, so that was, you know, some of the things that. You know, we have uh had the ability to do. Uh, it was really, really, um, really, really nice to see the engagement. So. Thank you to them. So they'll be getting that uh, that thank you note from us. And I'll probably do the same presentation at their presentation. The joint meeting, oh, sorry, I have another grant thing I wanted to share. Regarding student enrichment. Our PE teacher from Center School, Brian Phillips. He actually just received a $5,000 Dalio grant. And it's to improve the nature trail at Center School. And this is uh, he's going to be adding fitness stations in on the nature trail. Uh, and it's uh, a problem-based learning exercise. So the students are all hands on. They already helped. Clear some of the trail. They're doing all the planning. Figuring out boards, what they need for materials. We've engaged public works. For some support. So there's all sorts of things that just uh great opportunities for, for students. So. Uh, congrats to him for, for um doing that, writing that grant and obviously sharing with uh one of the public schools and, and improving that space. The joint meeting, I was informed yesterday that I believe the joint meeting is being scheduled for May 24th. At the town office building. They're trying to accommodate for a lot of different people. I'm not sure if that agenda went out yet. Um, or not. Okay. So it's not out yet, but I'm telling you, I believe. Hold May 24th because it looks like that is going to be the date. Again, it's not confirmed, but I've heard that, so you know, looking at all the dates across. When were people were available? It's a lot of people. I think it's about 15 people. Um, so hold that. Here are my others additions. Um, typically I have staffing on there. I didn't put it on this month because we didn't have any changes in staffing. And of course. I got a letter of resignation this week. So um. We did receive a, a letter from HMS teacher Teresa Smith. She's been with us um for six years. She's going to be resigning at the end of this year. She's actually going back to New Mexico. Uh, her daughter will be going to school there, uh, college there. Uh, and her family is there. So tremendous teacher for us over the last uh years. Um, when she came in, she's had a dynamic impact. Uh, and so she will be uh missed. So that posting uh will be uh going out and we'll be. Filling that. So obviously we wish her well. And then the last thing I, I wanted to make sure I added in was the, the Hall School centen- centennial celebration is this Friday night. Um, and the HMS Jim, I hope you all know about that. Um, it's from five to seven PM. We'll have the HMS band there. The chorus will be performing. We'll have pictures, memorabilia. There'll be some folks get, you know, sharing some, some short words and, and uh some light refreshments. So. It's uh going to be a good evening and just in celebration of, of Hall School being a hundred. So those are my items on my financial report, on my financial report, superintendent's report, financial report's next.
Okay, you could just move right along then into the financial report is next on the agenda.
All right. Let me get close this. And here we go. So finance where you can see the current status of the budget. The only, all of the grants have been applied now, and I don't even know if you really call excess cost a grant, but it's. Funding from the state, the majority of that has come in. It's the only thing that's not been applied. This 28,000. So all of our grants, all of our grant funding at this point. Has been applied. Um, and so uh, that's good. Uh, and obviously, as you can see, our assessment here, we said we were going to have some, some funding for some end of the year projects that we were accurate on that. And again, this is mainly because of changes in staffing, staffing that were staff that was here when we budgeted. Uh, at a higher salary and accepting benefits, taking benefits. Some of them left, a lower per, a person with a lower salary came in and did not take benefits. So. This is a lot of money for us at this time of the year, uh particularly around the benefits piece. Um, and so uh, questions about that, we'll be talking about end of year spending shortly, but. That's the.
I don't see any hands. So I think we're good on the financial report since we're going to be going into more detail on the next piece.
Okay. So the, the next thing that grant application submitted, I wanted to share what we submitted. I did submit a security grant application for security cameras. That was a couple of weeks ago when in. Some of that work has already been completed. You can actually do it retroactively. Um, and some of it, I believe we're going to use end of the year money. For more cameras. So that would be apply, it would be applied as well. It's a competitive grant. It's not a guarantee. That we're going to get it. So we'll see what happens. Uh, if you get it, we would get sixty three, our reimbursement rate is 63%. And the award would be approximately $67,000. If we get it, it does not come back into our budget. It goes into, to the town. It goes into the general fund. So that application's in. Uh, I also did work with our people services director, Marsha McGinley. Um, we submitted a grant for a mental health specialist. This is kind of a unique thing. We created a support position to our social worker and our school counselor. The case loads right now for mental health are extremely high. Across any district, um, they're all, they're extremely high and you can't find those folks. So. Um, this is the second or third round of this grant. People have put in for social workers. They've gotten the grant, but not been able to fill it and find a social worker. So Marsha had the great idea to try and find um someone that could support this work that was. Kind of in the middle of their process and what I'll, what I'll explain what I mean by that. We requested funding for an individual who has a bachelor's degree. But they're yet to complete their master's degree. And what that means is they're not certified yet. So it fall, would fall into that non-certified um union. However, um, they could be overseen by a school counselor or a school social worker and provide some support. While they do their masters to get certified. So like real world experience, um, which would be tremendous. We created this. Other districts are now copying us. I'm going to not, I'm going to share that. Um, because I shared this with my superintendent's group. I don't know if we'll find a position. I don't know if we'll get the grant because again, it is a competitive grant. This one is as well. This is a three-year grant. Years one and two are fully um. Funded by the, the, the grants. That means whatever you put into it, we put benefits and salary in. And then year three would be 70% of, they would fund 70%. So we'll see what happens. And if we get it or not, obviously I'll, I'll let you know. But. Uh, we again, as these grants come in, we apply for them and some of them we get automatically and some of them are, are competitive and these are both competitive.
Any questions about the grants? Thank you for doing yeoman's work on those, Mr. Stevens. That is not a light lift, especially for a competitive grant that we're in no way assured of being uh competitive as. Smaller districts are frequently disadvantaged in those applications. So.
Agreed.
For that. Then next we're going to move on to new business. Uh, let's start with our regular board of education minutes for April 11th. If someone would move for that passage, we can move right ahead. Um, I do see that a hand has been raised. We don't take questions from the public during the meeting, but there will be time for present to speak at the end of the meeting. So. Uh, you can comment at that point. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from our April 11th meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the April 11th meeting.
Thank you, Laura. Do I have a second?
I'll second that Tracy Anderson.
Thanks Tracy. Are there uh comments or questions on the minutes?
I just had one small correction. It's just a little thing, but page four. Talking about lactose intolerant, um, the. It should say lactaid that they will provide lactaid, which is AID. It says lactate, which is a different meaning. So.
Thank you for that. Lactaid should be capitalized as it is a brand name for lactose. Intolerant people to be able to drink a milk type of product. So uh, we can make that edit. So that going forward, we have the correct information there. With that edit, are we ready to move to a vote? Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes from our April 11th, 2023 meeting, signify by saying I or raising your hand. Okay, that was unanimous. So we can move on to the next question at hand. Which is our finance committee meeting minutes from April 25th. That were also included in your packet. I was at that meeting, so I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the finance committee meeting. Minutes from April 25th, 2023.
I will second that.
Thank you, Laura. Any questions on that? No, they, they're pretty straightforward. Okay. Thanks so much on that. Let's move ahead for vote. All in favor of approving the minutes from the finance committee signify by saying I. That was also unanimous. So we will move ahead to the next question. Thank you. Fire panel replacement.
Yeah, so we have um two capital projects um for the fire panel replacement. One is at CES, obviously, and the other one's at Hall. The finance committee did review um the quotes and recommended approving Siemens to be awarded on both projects tonight. I'm going to show you the details on that. Because the, these are identified as two separate projects on the capital plan. You should do separate motions for these, please, uh, one at a time, obviously. And that was a request of the business manager. It's easier for, easier for auditing as well. And so once it's approved, this work does not need any additional approvals. It can just move forward. If you approve it tonight, tomorrow I sign a contract and we get going. What I'm going to share with you is just so you can see the work that they reviewed. This is the fire panel um. Quotes that we received in the Siemens is in green because that's what they recommended. Um, and they were significantly, it was matched up exactly and um for what we were getting, the scope of work. That were there and the question we had was around CO2. Units and uh, that was clarified. So they're in there. Um, and so you can see that the plan budget was 41.5. Uh, and they came in at 27.1, which is great for Center. And Hall, the budget was 62.5 and they came at 46.693. So beyond that, I don't know if the, the, the committee wants to chime in and add any, any details. Or if you want to see a contract or, or what your thoughts are, but. I think that's the purpose of the committee to, to do that legwork.
We did look at them in detail and even though the prices are significantly different, they are comparable products. It is not a, a lower quality product just because it is lower. This is um, uh, something we looked at in more detail. But if you'd like additional information, we can provide it, but we did look at it for quite some time. Go ahead, Anne.
Um, I'm not sure what it is. Phil, can you explain what it is, please?
So it's basically your fire alarm system. So there's a, when you walk in the front door of both schools, there's a panel on the wall. And that panel is connected to all the smokeheads throughout the building. Um, and so basically, you know, if the fire alarm goes off, it tells you what smokehead it is and you, you can go to that location. Um, and that system is tied to the dispatch center for the 911 center. Um, so there's a, there's a call process. So it's inspected every year. It's serviced every year. These systems were in your CIP plan because uh we could not get parts for them anymore. They were significantly outdated. Um, and if they. Crash, if they, you know, break and uh they stay in alarm state, no pun intended. You have to basically have a fire watch, which means you pay somebody um around the clock to walk your buildings and make sure you're set. So. The fact that these came in um where they did and uh, this could be significantly higher. I'm going to tell you. We're placing a one-to-one system. Exactly where they are now is exactly where they'll go. Um, and that's typical when, when you do a one-to-one system, if you were going to make significant adjustments, you would have to. Uh, pay to have, you know, someone come in and map everything out and double your cost. So. That's basically what the system is.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Okay, seeing none. Um, do we have uh someone who wants to make a motion first for CES? Go ahead, Anne.
Um, I moved that we approved the CES fire panel. Um, I moved that we approved the CES fire panel um to Siemens Industry. Do you want cost, Phil?
Yeah.
Um, for twenty-seven thousand one hundred dollars.
Thank you, Ann, is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you, Donna. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to a vote, all in favor of supporting the Siemens industry bid for a CES fire panel. For twenty-seven one hundred dollars, please signify by saying I or raising your hand.
Hi.
Extensions? Nay? Okay, passes unanimously. Okay. Someone volunteer to do the same for HMS? Just jump right in, go ahead, Laura.
All right, I'll make the motion um that we. Um, ah, now I forget what the beginning part of it was, to award, I, I make a motion to award the fire panel. Work to Siemens Industry for, at Hall Memorial School for forty-six thousand six hundred ninety-three dollars.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Donna. Any additional questions? Okay, all in favor signify by saying I.
Hi.
Hi.
That was unanimous, thanks, we will move ahead then to the next item, which is sidewalk repair and replacement.
Okay, so again, we have two capital projects for sidewalk repair and replacement, it's not, you know, everything's not. Repaired or it's it's repair or replace, so it's, they have a map of all the items that need to be corrected. Both at center and at Hall. Um, again, the finance committee reviewed the quotes and and recommended approving J and E Building and Contracting. One thing I'll share before I put this up is that this is one of those, um. If you're in concrete right now, you know the area we live in, that they are replacing foundations, finding contractors to do. What we're gonna call smaller concrete work was extremely hard, um, we thought we had another vendor and they basically said. Uh, sorry, your job is too small, if you have anything large like this, uh, a hundred thousand dollars plus, let us know. With, that, that was not this work, so. Um, again, you, this is two projects, you'd have to approve them as two projects, uh, this is a different one, this can, work cannot happen right away. This does have to go to town meeting, I very let the first select woman know that, so if you pass it tonight, you're basically recommending. Um, approving the vendor for a, the price. To go to town meeting, uh, to request a town meeting for the selecting. So let me share my screen here.
Still want the vote to happen, to to approve them separately, one first enter and a separate.
Correct.
For uh Hall.
Yes, and this one is a, this work is a little bit differently, different, and I'm gonna make a a request to you and you can take it or leave it. Um, this type of work, you, because you're digging things up, you might run into some different issues, so. The, the quote here that came in at ten thousand ten, uh, two thirty, you may consider putting um. Uh, uh, couching a little bit to maybe put ten percent in there, um, or up to eleven thousand, so. If something happens as they are pouring or they find another crack, that we can act on it. Obviously, this is the contract I would sign would be for ten thousand two thirty, he couldn't do any additional work without approval. Um, and that approval would come through me if you approve that higher a amount, um, that's up to you. Uh, that would be my suggestion for both uh of these. Um, for, for, for both jobs and and they would be the, the recommended vendor for both of these.
I think a ten percent contingency would be, would be fair.
Yep, and this, um, this is that contingency, oops, you know what, sorry, let me give you one second and I. Did I share that with the committee?
Yes.
Question myself.
Yeah.
Captain.
What that was.
Yep.
Okay, we're gonna need the numbers back up.
Yeah, I'm trying to get back to my screen, sorry.
We're, we're good, but I'm not sure anybody jotted the numbers down.
Kept it the same, sorry, I just wanted to confirm that, so.
Okay.
So, well, my, my question is then, if, if you're going at ten percent for CES, did.
I was ballparking that, you can do ten percent for the same thing for HMS if you wanted, um, you're just trying to have a buffer. Uh, so if there's additional work that needs to happen as a result of something that you. I, I can act on that without coming back to you, so if you wanna do ten percent there, the thirty-one-six-sixty-eight is the, the, the. The bid that we received and it's accurate, if you wanna do anything above and beyond that, that's up to you, Laura.
Okay.
Donna also has her hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to check, so for center school. If my math's correct, we, if we add ten percent, it would be a maximum of eleven thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars. And for Hall, rounding it, it would be a maximum of thirty-four thousand. Eight hundred and thirty-five dollars, is that correct?
I did not do that math, but yes, that, that gives you a window to to act upon, yes.
And, and both of those are under the CIP plan, so they seem, still seem reasonable.
Correct, and they're underneath, right, they're underneath the budget.
So, but we don't have to be exactly at the ten percent, Donna, we can round it up to the uneven number if we so chose.
Correct.
To a certain amount rather than what we're authorizing that it gets. Okay.
Do I would explain that at town meeting, if, if it gets to that point, I would just explain that.
Thanks. Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we prove J and E Building and Contracting. To repair and replace. The sidewalk at Center Elementary School for an amount not to exceed. Eleven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Perfect, thank you so much, do I have a second?
I will.
Laura was.
Go ahead, Ann, go ahead, Ann.
Okay, was that you, Ann, seconding it?
Laura, you get the next one.
Okay, okay, so that was seconded by Ann Brojon, uh, any additional questions?
I have a question about the motion, did we have to say for it to go to town meeting, or was that okay?
It, it's okay, as long as you approve it, it's, that's where you know it's going.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion to um pass this uh along to town meeting? In the amount of eleven thousand two hundred and fifty, was that the right amount of maximum up to but not exceeding? Uh, signify by saying I.
Hi.
Right.
Okay, passes unanimously. Okay, so who wants to make the motion for Hall?
I can do that one too, as long as the page is up, so I make a motion that we. Contract with J and E Building and Contracting to do the sidewalk repair and replacement at Hall. Um, school. For the unamount not to exceed thirty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. With an understanding that this will go to town meeting.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Laura. Additional questions? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to uh contract with J and E Building for the sidewalk repaired HMS signify by saying I.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, and that was unanimous, so we can move on, thank you so much. Uh, next on our agenda is the board member vacancy. Um, when the process is that, um, when we have a member leave um midterm, for whatever reason. Uh, the Board of Education votes amongst its existing members to replace that. Current state statute allows for my, and requires minority representation on all boards. Um, so with that purpose, um, I received a letter from Peter Latinskis from the. Republican Town Committee nominating Arthur Christensen for uh Herb's vacant seat. Uh, Mr. Christensen has joined us, um, and I would um. Uh, like to start with, um, seeing Arthur, if you're willing to accept that nomination.
Yes, I am.
Thanks, since the letter didn't come from you, I don't wanna make any assumptions one way or the other, so thank you for that. The, uh, the understanding is also that, um, because Mr. Christensen has served as a substitute in the Wellington Public Schools. Once you are elected to serve on the Oversight Board, you can no longer be an employee of the school, so Mr. Christensen, I believe you've agreed. That, um, that won't be continuing what, if you were elected to this board, so there is no conflict of interest in case anybody had any thoughts on that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, do any of the existing board members have a question for Mr. Christensen? Oh, I should probably also, uh, to the best of my knowledge, there is no other candidate that's being put forth, but I think that. Um, I should probably accept nominations on the floor before we vote, so if there is. Any other board member who would like to make a nomination, uh, go ahead, Donna.
I would like to nominate Arthur Christensen. Who served out the remaining term, term of Herb Erica, um, on the Board of Education.
Thank you, Donna, that makes it official, I appreciate that.
Okay, I'll second it, Ann Groshon.
Thank you, man. Okay, now, does anyone have questions for Mr. Christensen? I can start, just, uh, Mr. Christensen, can you um say a little bit about your background and um. Uh, what it is you hope to accomplish as a member of the Wellington Board of Education?
Sure, so, uh, most of you know me, uh, I'm Arthur Christensen, um, I'm a Region nineteen Board of Education member. And, uh, I'm looking forward to, if I am to be into this year, I appreciate the opportunity, I wish it was under different circumstances. Um, but I do appreciate the opportunity, I have a six-year-old daughter who goes to center, uh, so I have a vested interest in the. In the outcome of the school, um, not just for my daughter, though, and in, learning a lot about the kids in this town, especially being in the school and and subbing. For this year as I did, I, I really, my heart is to do what's best for the kids, and I feel that while. Helping out and substituting is fantastic for the school, I think I could do a lot better on a board like this one, um. To provide an uh, a different outlook, um, to bring some of my, some of my knowledge. Uh, just from some of the jobs that I've had and some of the things that I've done in my life, um, and I think I'd be able to round out the board fairly well.
Thank you. Other questions? Laura?
One. Um. Thank you first for um putting yourself forward to, to be on another uh board in town, yeah, you, you understand the time commitment. I'm wondering, um, what you see as your most important role? As a member of a public school Board of Education?
I think my most important role is to listen to the parents, um, I'm friends with a lot of the parents in town. And some of their concerns that they have, some of their praises that they have, I would like to echo onto the board as a member. Um, I feel that the most important thing I could be is a conduit for the people in this town to get a voice out there, if they feel like they're not being heard for whatever reason. Um, I'm more than happy to listen and I'm more than happy to, to back them up.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, uh, seeing none, then we'll move to a vote. Um, all those in favor of appointing Arthur Christensen to serve um to fill the remainder of the term for Herb Erica. Which is until sometime in November, I believe, Arthur, I can't remember the exact date. Um, but it's until the next election and then a little more after that, um, please signify by saying I or raising your hand.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, and that was unanimous, so, uh, thank you, Mr. Christensen, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Arthur, I'm not sure about swearing in for you, because you, you must have to be sworn in again. So I'll connect with, uh, Robin tomorrow and I'll, I'll touch base with her as well to let her know.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next on the agenda is old business, including end of year purchasing, which, um, if you would also start, Phil, with a. Brief overview on the process that we use to approve purchasing such as this, so that people are clear on the process.
Yeah, so you have a board policy, um, that basically, uh, you know, there's certain dollar values that we have to go out and basically gather quotes. So when you build a budget, um, you know, we, we put things in there and say, okay, this is what makes up that nine thousand dollars, and there's certain programs where. Where, when you have general supplies, we don't nickel and dime those things, we don't add up the, you know, thirty-four reams of paper and twelve purchases. We don't add those things up as a general number. Um, but when it gets to some of the higher dollar values. I'm required to, to follow a, a specific process, just like the half of the town, so when it meets a certain threshold, five thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars. Um, sometimes it has to go out for a full RFP. Um, and sometimes I can just uh act, and so, you know, we're, uh, this is a silly example, but it's something we were looking at today. Um, we're looking at a replacement for a whiteboard for a music teacher, um, and looking at various uh items, they're all under, obviously. For a whiteboard, it's under five thousand dollars, and so we still shop around, um, to get the best deal we can to make our money go as far as we can. And so that process is kind of how we live the school year. Um, those items throughout the year, though, that are over five thousand dollars, I just follow the policy, it doesn't come to you. Where I tend to try and, and I think this is a little bit of history here, I think. Um, is that superintendents in the past, when there's things that are higher dollar values that were not necessarily budgeted for. Like in a prior year, you know, spending fifty thousand dollars on laptops. That was something that, uh, I didn't share with you, I, I shared there was a need over a period of time, uh, and you decided with the funds, you, you'd move on that. Um, this is that same situation we're in now. Uh, I don't ever recall having this pocket of money that we see right now. Um, it seemed like everybody knew that came in, waived insurance, and uh, it's, that's a significant amount of money. Um, and so really now the process is you have a, you have, you have options, basically, I'm still your CEO, so. Um, I could continue to follow the process and, uh, or you could choose to weigh in on some of those bigger projects and give me some direction. So, since last meeting, basically, I've, I've followed through on the items that you were asking about. Um, and, uh, the things that, there's also a timeframe here, and I know, uh, you know, there's been some comments in the public about. Well, they returned a hundred thousand dollars last year, well, sometimes we don't know those things in time to be able to spend it. And those projects really are supposed to be done in this fiscal year, so, um. If you have funding right now and you had someone come in that's a special adult placement, you have to utilize that funding that you have, um, and so. As we continue over the next, uh, X number of days to June thirtieth, I'm gonna continue to monitor the budget, so you really have a couple of things here. The items that I listed out last time, chimney repair, uh, library furniture, carpet replacement, window replacement. Um, the gym AC, um, the security cameras at Hall tile replacement. So treads and risers where there, there, you know, need to be replaced, iPads for the unified arts classrooms, um. Those, those items, I can just manage, or you could go. Item by item and improve them, the challenge is, is I'm gonna continue to watch the budget over the next month. And if I feel like, ooh, it's getting close, I'm closing in on that window of what we said we were gonna re- uh, return to the town. I wouldn't act on something, and so. If you try to approve everything, um, it might put you in a tight spot. Uh, if you allow me to manage it up to a point and know that I'm going to make sure that there's at least two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in there. Um, to return, I could manage it that way as well. I have, uh, basically, I'm following the same process, I'm getting the quotes, we have quotes for carpet, we have quotes for tile, we have the. The security camera quotes, some of these are project extensions, so I don't need to do a, you know, a full process, um. If it's like the, the camera extension, you wouldn't go to a different, different brand, you'd follow the same, you know, brand and it would be in addition, so. I'm glad to do it that way. Um, my fear is if you pick and choose, uh, you're either going to return more money. Um, or in, in potentially do less projects. Um, or you're gonna have to meet again, uh, and, uh, do additional approvals, so. That's kind of where we're at right now, and that's the, the list of projects that I have the numbers for, um, I'm assured by vendors. That they can meet our timeframe, because the timeframe is short. Uh, when kids get out of school, we need to be, you know, doing carpets right away, those rooms would get entered, uh, emptied really quickly. Uh, I'm, if I have a vendor that's willing to work on a weekend, if you were to prove and, and say to me tonight, look at. As long as you return those, the dollars what, that we've promised. And you can act, I could talk to vendors now and say, if you can work on weekends, we can start doing tile now. Um, on those weekends, so that's, and that's kind of the conversation, I think, where we're at right now, I know. I'd love a really clean plan, but at the end of your spending is not a clean plan typically, it's, it's, uh, you know, we work a day at a time and. You know, we use.
Time is really of the essence.
It is.
And thank heavens, we had so few snow days, so that we actually have a window in which.
Correct.
Some years that would not be an option. Uh, thoughts on process? Thoughts on process? How you'd like to move ahead? Donna, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, one is, can you put up that list again, Phil? Do you have it handy?
You knew we were going to ask.
I didn't, I didn't pull it, so hold on, let me see.
Well, wait, are there additional questions while Phil is looking?
I was, I was just thinking about, you know, maybe we should prioritize them in buckets.
I think we did that at our last meeting. It's worth discussing if there's any more, but we prioritize safety issues immediately.
And I did, we did after the meeting too, my, you know, just having discussions. And literally, you could do everything that I put on that list, you could do, and still, there's, there's a window of money in there.
Okay.
There was still, I think, $85,000 in there that was above and beyond. The only one that I'm still waiting on is the, the, the cost that I had already, the, I had already built the buffer, the AC in the gym for Center School. I had already built a buffer on that one because I thought everything is coming more expensive. It's just the way things are happening right now. So I've already built a buffer on that. If it's more than that, there's still a window to cover. But literally, the dollar amount that you have in the budget right now, we guaranteed $125,000 into the general fund. We're putting $150,000 of the, the return into that, that return as well, because we're going to ask for it back, because we offset our budget next year by that. So that's the, the 275,000. If I do every project, if we're able to do every project in the timeframe, there's still extra money in there.
And, and will it be ordered, like you mentioned about floors, but I know we talked about paint. And I'm saying, you know, please do the painting before you rip out the carpet, so that the carpet doesn't get ruined by the paint. Like, just, I just want to make sure things are done in, in order, so that what we do won't get ruined by the next step.
They, it will happen that way, and it honestly, there's, I think there's only three carpets in each school that we have, and it's simply because they're the tile people too. And so they can only do so many things. And it'll just be timeframe. Those rooms might not be the rooms that need to be painted. And if I have contractors that have to work around each other, we might alter, find a different room to paint that, you know, was on the, that's how we prioritize. Unless it lines up, timing-wise.
Additional questions?
Michelle, the only other thing I'll add is, I'm not going to do anything different that's not on this list. I'm not going to come out and say, oh, I just spent $75,000 on this, and it's something you've never heard of. You're going to hear it from me first. If something comes up that I'm, that we identify that's late in the game, you're going to hear it from me. That's just the way I operate. You're not going to get something that's, that's brand new. It's, these are all things that are either on CIP or we've identified, identified throughout the year.
Okay, we can't yet see that list. So if you want to share your screen and then I saw.
Sorry.
And you were referring to it, so I knew you thought you had shared it. Brianna, and then Anne.
Hi, um, can you just remind me or update where the roof projects lie at this point?
It's not part of this list because it was, it's, it's time, timing.
Okay.
You would never get it.
Yeah, when Donna was talking about the carpet and the paint, I remember you saying something about the air conditioning and the roof. Was that going to be conflicting? Or would it be fine?
Conditioning for the gym is not located on the roof, so they don't conflict.
Oh, it doesn't matter?
Yeah.
Okay. And we already had a system that could easily connect, right?
It's just an extension of the project. We, when we put in the heating system, it's tied to the AC. It's an additional piece.
Yep. Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Share screen, sorry.
Anne, I saw your hand too.
The green is what I was prioritizing.
Can you make the screen a little larger for those of us with old eyes? Sorry. Okay. Can everybody read that, or do we need one more? Okay. If you see us all get really close to our screen.
Yep. I can't see you now, so.
Okay, I'll recognize hands. Anne, you're next.
Um, Phil, if, if you do all of those things and still have some extra money, could we continue on with the plumbing and do a little bit of that if possible?
Yeah, so one of the things that, that is a challenge is the timing of this. Is that doing, we could, there's additional plumbing, but the problem is, is some of the, the plumbing is tied, and I'm speaking specifically to Center School or any of this, the school, Hall School, where they have a classroom sink that needs new cabinetry. The problem is, is those two projects are tied together. And so you wouldn't want to spend, you know, the money on the plumbing without doing the, the sink over, the, the cabinetry over. The ones we've repaired are because they needed to be repaired before we had, you know, some significant issues. But there is money that's in next year as well. And there's, the, the next list is ready to go. If there is plot minor, I, I'm going to give you an example. There, the, the Center School freezer decided to shut down on Sunday night. That's our, under our purview. So if you want to call that plumbing money, it's already, it's already being fixed. There's, that's an ongoing process. If things, as things break, we fix things.
And it's probably wise to keep a little buffer money that way anyway, in case another, something like a freezer goes. Okay, thank you.
So I think we could probably have a motion along the lines of to approve spending any funding left in the budget while retaining $275,000 to return to the town that we, as a minimum, that we would authorize you to spend things off of the list as presented. But that if anything came up that's not on that list, you would reach out to us and we could have a special meeting. Is that fair?
Michelle, so moved.
It wasn't my intention, but that'll work. Is that, is that correct, though, Phil? Is that the, is that the, the?
Yeah, as long as you understand those are the big-ticket items, like there, there might be some things that are $400 that, that are not on that list that I'm, I've been doing all along.
Those normally, absolutely.
Right, that's, that's, those are within the budget, so there's nothing that's.
Right, right. You can still buy pencils. We're good.
You get my point.
Is there a second to Anne's motion? I'll second my own motion that I kind of made that Anne supported. Are there additional questions about this process and end-of-year purchasing? Okay, so seeing none, all those in favor of authorizing Superintendent Stevens to spend remaining funds for this budget year while retaining a minimum of $275,000 to return to the town at the end of the fiscal year for items such as those on that list. And if there's anything of significance that is not on that list, we will come back for a special meeting to approve it. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Okay, and so that passes unanimously.
Thanks. And obviously, I will give you an update as things are completed from that list. I will share out what was, what was done.
Okay, and we'll certainly discuss it again at our next meeting. And then again in July, once we have a better sense of exactly how much was left in this budget. Okay, that is the, the full part of the regular agenda. We are, of course, at the end of our meeting, we have President to speak.
Can I just say something first?
Oh, sure, go ahead, Tracy.
Just a question before you move on out of the.
Sorry.
Um, we were approving minutes. I was waiting for you to put the curriculum meeting, and I know we can't vote on that, move on that now, but is that something from April 20th that should be put on next month's agenda?
Yes, it should. If, if there were minutes from the curriculum meeting. We don't have those. They were not in the packet, so we would need.
No, they were emailed a few weeks ago.
Yeah.
Oh, they, I thought they were approved already. They're, they're not approved already?
Well, our last meeting was April 12th, and that meeting was the 20th.
Okay, so we'll put that on our next month's agenda.
I think Brenda sent them out pretty quickly after the meeting.
I saw them on the website today too.
Thanks, Tracy. We're all going to have to step up to catch those things to make sure that we're all holding each other accountable, so I appreciate that. Okay, so next on the agenda is President to speak. We invite members of the public to comment and ask questions at the beginning and end of our meetings. We ask that you start with your name and address. We ask that you keep your comments civil and respectable so that we can maintain a high level of respect for one another in these meetings. Please note that this is a meeting in public, not a public meeting, so the board will not be responding back to your comments or questions. Please note that we do listen to events and questions. And if there were specific questions, we do refer them to Mr. Stevens for response if there were something that we should follow up with at a future meeting. So, since it is at the end of the meeting, there was a hand that came up earlier. And I cannot recall who it was, or if you are still on the call. John Mitchell, yes, you had asked, or had a question specifically about, I think, about something that we were discussing. So I wanted to give you the opportunity, since I put you off at that point. So if you want to come off of mute and start with your name and address, please. Oh, you are still on mute. We cannot hear you. Actually, you're not on mute.
You are off mute, though. Yeah.
Um, it could be that your microphone or your headphones are not working. This happens quite frequently if you have wireless headphones that are attached someplace else. Oh, nope, couldn't hear you there. Okay, there is one other person with their hands up, so if you want to work on your technical issue, we'll come back to you in a minute. Nick, if your hand is up, you can go next.
Nick Tella, 49 Myrtle. So unfortunate to see that there was no recommendation to the SBC. I also find it interesting that the pronoun situation is a political thing. However, the members are allowed to display their pronouns, but those that may object to it cannot display any sort of political stance, even though the chair has a political stance. So I find that very hypocritical and interesting. I have a concern, and, and I hope my recommendation can be taken when it comes to the library. Just like we go to the movies, sometimes it's PG 13, rated R, and such. It's come to my attention that there was a book given to a child under the age of six. Now, with the family, I don't know, I've not talked to his family or anything. But if any family wants a book that may be controversial in such of transgender or something, then fine, let the family have it. However, let there be some sort of system where the family can say, hey, I approve of my child taking this home. Or if a family does not approve, allow that family to deny that. Now, one paragraph out of that book. When Aiden was born, just reading it, when Aiden was born, everyone thought he was a girl, but once he came out as a trans boy, Aiden and his parents fixed the parts of his life that didn't fit anymore. I don't know how a child under the age of six is being given that book, unless the parent says it's okay. I just hope there's some kind of protection put in place going forward where the parents can say it's appropriate or not appropriate for my child to have that book. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell, were you able to address your microphone issue? Want to try again? I can hear you now. There you go.
Hey, everybody. So my question was, and it's not a question really. The grant for the cameras, when I, I worked for Manchester Public Schools, so I wrote the same grant. And I hope in Wellington, we future-proofed a little bit and went with 4K cameras and potentially upgrading in the backend of the switches and things like that to support the higher resolution and things like that. So it's more of a statement than a question. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Christensen, your hand is up as well.
Hi, Arthur Christensen, 14 Birch Meadow Lane. I'd come off camera, but I'm currently surrounded in the dark, so that's why I'm not. I just want to say that I know Mr. Stevens gave you guys the pictures of the, the science funding from the ARPA funds that was in the, in Center and Hall. And I was actually in the school in Center for that day, and I was there for push and pull with Kay and biomimicry for the grade two, and the kids absolutely had a blast with it. So I'm glad to see that the ARPA funds are being used to get them something fun to do and a little educational too. I think they learned something and didn't realize it. But besides that, I just want to say thank you to everybody for voting me through, and I do look forward to serving with all of you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has comments for public to speak for this part of the meeting? You can use either the reactions button or come on screen and wave, and we can see your hand. Okay, not seeing anyone. We welcome you to come at the beginning and end of any of our future meetings, if you so wish. But for right now, we will move on to board comment. And so this is always the person who gets to go first, gets to say all the good stuff, and then we can say ditto. So Laura, you're off of mute first, so you get the honor.
I did forget to mute. My dog has been quiet this evening. So first, I'd like to welcome Arthur Christensen to the board. We're very happy to have you. Unfortunately, as you said, I wish it were better circumstances. And, and I just, with your, your last comment about being in school for the New England science and sailing, I do think you were very fortunate and lucky. I would have loved to have been there. That just looked absolutely wonderful. I'm, I'm so excited that the funds were used for that type of a day. I mean, just went to my science teacher heart. I want to thank Erin for the math curriculum presentation. And I really hope that everybody kind of digs into that, because it really is such a different way of teaching math from what we all experienced with, with problem-based learning rather than the gradual release. The artwork, how fabulous is that? I'd want to come in just to see it hanging in your office. That was just really, really cool. Congratulations to Brian Phillips, getting the $5,000 Dalio Grant. I mean, if you can have kids outdoors, it was the nature trail, right, that's being upgraded as a fitness trail. So, I mean, I used that nature trail so much when I was teaching there. So you're, you're talking, you know, environmental ed, science, fitness. It's, it's just a wonderful, wonderful package. And to, for Teresa Smith, we wish her well, certainly understand her wanting to go home and to her family, although for me, New Mexico is way too hot, but, but understand that. So that is, so we wish her well. The only, the only other thing I just wanted to say, I don't think I could be able to, I just, in, in some way, wanted to say goodbye to her and how much we're going to miss him. Just, just to acknowledge that, and Michelle, I think you did a nice job at the beginning, but anyway, yeah, I'm done.
Thank you, Laura. I do want to note that we do have someone from the public who has raised their hand. Linda, we have already moved past the present to speak part, but if my colleagues are willing to, to give you your, your three minutes of time, anybody have an objection? Okay, Linda, if you can come off of mute, start with your full name and address. And please keep your comments to three minutes, if you would, please. We can't hear you because you're still on mute, so if you're able to come off of mute, please do so. Could be that her hand is raised in accident, so I cannot know for sure, since I cannot see you. But I think we'll move ahead with any additional board comment, then please know that we always welcome members of the community at the beginning and end of our meeting. So even if you can't say something tonight, you're welcome at the start of our next meeting on June 13th. Okay, who's next?
I'll go.
Okay, Brianna, then Tracy.
Yep, forgive me while I try to get through all my scribbles here. Thanks to Erin again for another curriculum presentation. She's always has answers to our questions. The NEST visit is a great way to use those ARPA funds, and I love that it was for all of the students. It's like bringing a field trip to them, and I know field trips is something they've really been missing over the last few years. So that was a great way to do that. And I bet some of their excitement from that at Center will lead towards a lot of interest and participation in helping Mr. Phillips with that trail, because now they're a little bit, you know, really psyched to get in, get their hands in things. So that's awesome. I love it so much. Good luck to Ms. Smith. I now understand her interest in New England history. Um, she was like really into that, so now it makes sense, since it's totally like her opposite corner. And so, thanks to her for taking care of my girls and for teaching all those other students. You've been great. Good luck to you. Um, and I wanted to welcome Arthur, of course. I know you've been paying close attention this whole time. And I look forward to. um, and I look forward to serving with you. And, um, of course, my condolences to the Erica family, the last thing I remember her being super passionate about was books. And sometimes in my mind, I'm think, I mean, I love books, I have too many. Um, my daughter falls asleep with them, of course, but, um, I think sometimes we get a little caught up in like the fast, easy way to do things and using the internet, and it's so quick to do things that way. Um, but there is something about holding a book. And Herb was a hundred percent right about that, and, um, that's something I kinda connected with him about, and something I'm gonna make sure, um, students now and always can have and appreciate.
Thanks, Brianna, I saw your hand next, Tracy.
Oh, yes, um, so a lot of it's already been said, but, um, it's worth repeating to, uh, show my appreciation to, for Herb, for, um, that's a lot of time dedicated to our town, not only, to our town, but to this, to education overall, he's dedicated his whole life to education, I believe, with, between his career, in education as well as after. Uh, welcome, Arthur. Um, look forward to serving with you, and, um, I'll say ditto to the other things, but also, um, I wanted just to acknowledge, I appreciate the thinking outside of the box with the grants, especially the mental health, position that hopefully we can fill, cuz I think, um, with all of the vacancies that are out there in education and all of the needs that we balance in them, I appreciate thinking outside the box, so, thank you.
Thanks, Tracy. Anne? Come off mute first. Anne, you have to come off mute before we can hear you.
My husband has dual screens, and the, the mouse keeps getting stuck in the other screen. Um, first of all, did Erin graduate yesterday? Our congratulations in order for, Erin Connolly and her, her doctorate, um, so congratulations to Erin. Um, Herb was such a gentleman, I'm really gonna miss his gentlemanliness, and, um, I believe he celebrated a hundred, hundred-first birthday, so that's really phenomenal, so he really will be missed. Um, also, we forgot to mention Frozen this past weekend, which was phenomenal, so Mr. Sonenberg, if I'm saying that correctly, he did a fantastic job with all his helpers and all the kids, and, they really did a wonderful job, so thank you, everybody who participated in that. And welcome Arthur, um, to our team, and, um, I believe that's it.
Thanks, Anne. Donna, do you have board comment you'd like to share?
Yes, I have several. Um, first, um, I just wanna thank everybody, especially the students, for the wonderful cards that they made for Herb. I was able to show some of them to him, um, and left them all with his family, and, and they were blessed. Um, so I wanna thank you again, um, cuz I don't normally pick up the phone and call Phil and say, I need something, and I need it now. Um, but I did, and he with the help of the students delivered, so thank you again. Um, another thing I wanna mention is, I think that it's time we move to a hybrid meeting. I had somebody come up to me and say, I'd like to attend the Board of Ed meeting this week, and I, I explained to them, um, and they aren't able to do online, so in light of every other board in town not being a hundred percent remote, um, I think that we need to move forward and not be a hundred percent remote. Um, I think hybrid would benefit the parents, who have little ones at home and wanna be able to pop on, but can't really leave the home, um, but also allow community members to participate more fully. Um, I'm hoping we get the math death, from, um, what Erin presented today, in that way, um. This is hard for me. There is a saying that it's better to put a millstone around your neck, and to be drowned into the depths of the sea instead of leading a child astray. Before anyone misunderstands my words, let me make it clear, I'm not suggesting or advocating any violence whatsoever. What I am saying is that we have a serious responsibility not to mislead our children. I'm saying this on behalf of those who will not speak up. I've been contacted by people asking, is it true? Until recently, I had to say, I'm not sure, now I'm sure. Center Elementary School is where our youngest children go to be educated. It has come to my attention that Center School Library has resources, that encourage our youngest students to go down a path that should not be encouraged in a school setting. Certain matters should be left to families to deal with. In the past, individuals who tried to sexualize children were called groomers or pedophiles, that is not okay. More than once, I've been told that parents won't speak up because they fear that their child will be targeted. I cannot speak to the validity of their concerns, but I can say that I will not be silent. Approximately fifty percent of our students aren't meeting minimum standards, and yet there is time and resources spent, to encourage a minor to consider chemicals, castration, or surgical neutering, all while making it seem like it's no big deal. It's not okay to expose a four-year-old to these topics in a school setting. My fellow board members, I respectfully request, that we take time to do a deep dive into what is really being taught to our students. Let's keep the good and remove the harmful. Parents, family members, and good citizens of Wellington, I ask that you participate in the process. Ask the hard questions, demand answers, and watch out for the children. Once again, I'm asking for the sex ed curriculum, I have asked since October of two thousand and two, at every single meeting except for December of two thousand and two, when I was not present. I need to expect what I inspect, what I expect. Unfortunately, I'm concerned about what I will find. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Donna, I can hear the passion in your voice, um, and we do also very much, uh, need to respect one another's opinions, and we will, of course, sometimes disagree on this board, but we always do listen respectfully to one another, um, on issues that we, um, have opinions about. Um, that said, I do wanna clarify that the board has a position on controversial issues, our policy six-one-four-four, is around controversial issues, and we also have a community relations policy one-three-one-two, on, uh, public complaints, including a full process set up there, so that process does exist already, um, and we encourage, uh, parents and members of the public to do so, if they have particular complaints. It's very hard when we hear things secondhand, um, through other places, now, I'm not saying that you didn't speak to these people directly, Donna. Um, but, again, when we hear stories secondhand, it's very difficult for us to have a full conversation, and now is not the time for that, to have that conversation, cuz this is just the board comment section of the meeting. So, um, we will certainly be having future conversations around these issues, so know that they will be put on our agenda, um, as time permits and as priorities allow. So, um, with that, my other board comment is that, um, we did not mention, or at least we didn't say during board comment, the Hall Memorial School is celebrating its one-hundredth year anniversary on Friday, with an event Friday after work, five to seven P M. And I would encourage members of the community to participate and to go to Hall School with that. So, um, Donna, I'm not gonna engage right now in a conversation back and forth, if you would like to speak with me afterwards, we can do so either by email or by phone. Um, but, uh, for this meeting, I believe we've now had, all had our chance for comment at this time. So, uh, with that, I will take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
We adjourn the meeting?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Anne, thank you, Tracy. All in favor of adjourning the meeting signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Extentions? And with that, the meeting is adjourned, our next meeting is June thirteenth. Um, however, there may be an additional meeting, if there is a joint meeting scheduled with the school building committee and the Board of Selectmen. So, please keep your eyes on your calendar, once there is a date scheduled, we will reach out to all of you for that date. Okay, thank you. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Night, everybody.
His recording stopped?